I'm going to call to order the September 23, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome all of you that are here in the council chamber to the council chamber. I also want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10, those who might be watching us on their computers, those who might be listening to us on the computers, or those who might be listening to us on the radio. This is your city government, and we hope you'll participate in any way that you're comfortable with. So, welcome to all. When I step into court, take the city roll, please.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Mayor Tower?
Here.
Present seven.
Would all please rise. Ms. Woman, Pansky, will read the invocation, and we have some students will lead us in the pledge.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask our students to turn around and stay up here, please. We do appreciate you coming down and helping us out with the pledge today. These people like to know a little bit about you, like, so why don't you let us know what your names are, where it is that you go to school, what grade you're in, and maybe some things that you might be involved in in the way of some activities in school.
I'm Ian Leifgren. I go to Lord's Academy Middle School. I'm in eighth grade, and I just play wrestling, baseball, and math ball, which is the belle of the books.
I'm Alexandra Woganese, and I go to Lord's Academy Middle School. I'm in eighth grade, and I do track and swing choir.
Good. Glad to have both of you here tonight. Also, Ian had a little football injury, he's been on the football team, and hasn't lasted long on a team with his injury. But we do appreciate you coming down today, and I have a certificate for each one of you. Ian, one for you. Alexandra, one for you. So if we could give them a hand? We'll let you two take off. Again, thanks for coming. Okay, it takes us to a public hearing. I'll read through the public hearing. If anybody would like to comment on it, please feel free to come up to the microphone. The microphone is turned on up there. Okay, the public hearing, Resolution 14-418, approve final resolution for special assessments, cold mix asphalt paving, various locations. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion.
I just have a question.
Sure.
For those that are watching on TV, those on radio, et cetera, Mr. Pottack, what streets are going to be part of this year's cold mix asphalt paving project? I know those citizens probably have already got letters from the clerk's office, but if we could just have the streets identified for those in attendance and those watching on TV.
Okay, we have six locations. Hawk Street, south of Buchanan, Rugby between Eighth and Eleventh Avenue, Adams Avenue, east of Bauman, Rep. Avenue, between Pinocchio and Eagle, Nebraska between 22nd Avenue and 23rd Avenue, and Michigan Street, south of 18th Avenue.
And could you just briefly, for, again, informational purposes, what do we do when it's a cold mix asphalt?
The cold mix asphalt program, as we had sent a letter out to all the residents explaining that this is considered a maintenance operation, according to the code, it lasts a minimum of five years. We found that it's been lasting up to 15 or more years. The intent is that we do an asphalt pavement to give us some time to work on other streets with street reconstruction projects, and then come back to these streets as the more maintenance or reconstruction is needed.
And most of these streets are mostly residential streets and streets that aren't high-traffic streets also, correct?
That's correct. There is, you know, there are businesses, like there's a business on Rugby, but for the most part, they're residential streets.
Okay. So then we grind down the street a little bit, smooth it out, and then put the cold mix asphalt in, right?
We only have to do the, some millings where we match into the existing concrete roads or existing asphalt roads in good condition, or at the driveways, we might have to do some grading, minor grading along the edges, to make sure we have drainage, positive drainage. And so we try to do a minimal amount of work and just put the overlay on top of what's there.
And it's a very little interruption for the citizens that live on those streets as far as parking or things like that, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for the roll call vote on Resolution 14-418.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, time for citizen statements to the council. This is an opportunity where citizens can come up to the microphone up here and make a comment they would like about the city. Could be something positive that's going on, or it could be a concern that you have about the city. A few little rules go with that. If you do come up, please give us your name, please give us your address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council, do not talk about things that are elsewhere on the agenda, on tonight's agenda, and there's to be no electioneering. So if anybody would like to come up now?
My name is Chuck Hodge, 202 Oxford Avenue. I'm the secretary of the recently formed Greater Winnebago Advocacy Coalition on Mobility, and I wanted to let the public know that we have meetings on the first Thursday of every month from 2:00 to 4:00 at the senior center. Now, what I'm going to say, we haven't formed our bylaws or anything else like that, so what I'm about to say is from, you know, my personal account. Dear council members, transportation development plans developed by the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission are obviously required by the Department of Transportation and are used by NGOs and local governments to establish their need for federal assistance on operating and capital assistance. So however unfortunate it may be, I would like to point out, it's pretty clear that Go Transit, in anticipation of cutbacks in federal transportation funding, went on a spending spree on themselves with the available DOT capital assistance grants available in 2013. The results, a dysfunctional ADA noncompliant fixed route system where only $10,000 was earmarked for ADA compliance projects, which supposedly involved a few paving and curbing Contrary to what the Transportation Department is saying, all these problems are the direct result of Go Transit spending almost all the federal grant money they received in 2013 on expensive items for themselves. They totally disregarded the capital improvements which were suggested in the 2011 Oshkosh Transportation Development Plan, which would have made the present fixed route system ADA compliant. Instead, they spent the grant money on a $110,000 passenger counting system that cannot tell the difference between the elderly and the disabled from regular riders. This is especially problematic because passenger numbers in boarding and lighting locations are used by Go Transit to justify changes in the fixed route system, and the elderly and the disabled will not be represented in the passenger counts. Another concerning matter is Go Transit has a history of reporting deceptive and misleading numbers regarding passenger counts, if it helps them advance their agendas. One example is the May 2012 Transit Advisory Board's Agenda Items on Fewer Stops in Parking Lots. They said currently 93% of the passengers at 88 of the most highly-used stops in the system do not access the system in parking lots. This increases to 96% of the passengers. The truth is, almost all the destinations which required the buses to enter parking lots were actually some of the most highly-used stops in the system. Out of Go Transit's 89 bus stops, a total of 11 required entering parking lots. Out of those 11 bus stops, three were found to be among the 10 busiest stops in the system, and five of those stops were among the top 20. This new piece of technology being used by Go Transit apparently does not offer any auditing capabilities where Go Transit passenger counts can be checked for tampering and accuracy. All the Transportation Department needs to do is interrupt the laser on the counter as many times as they feel is sufficient, or they could perform a time clock revision with the system and revise the passenger counts any way they want to. East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission and the public should be highly skeptical and concerned about this new passenger counting system. There are just too many ways to beat it. They also spent $113,000 in surveillance upgrades on buses and to transit facilities. Upgrades indicate that the surveillance systems on Go Transit buses and the transit facilities were still in good working order. Yet during this time of fiscal cutbacks and the new budget considerations, Go Transit spent $113,000 on upgrading a surveillance system that didn't need upgrading. They could have spent the taxpayers' money on something that Go Transit really needed, like capital improvements to make the fixed route system ADA compliant. They spent $60,000 on an accessible van they said was replacing a supervisor staff vehicle. Go Transit already has a couple of late-model compact supervisor staff vehicles. The van they wanted to replace was a van that is used by Go Transit drivers. Go Transit claims this vehicle has been used to help up catch-up routes when they have fallen behind schedule and is therefore used for passenger transport from time to time. An accessible vehicle ensures that we are providing equitable service to our customers. The Transportation Department knows the only equitable service this new accessible van is going to provide Go Transit bus drivers at shift changes. The Oshkosh Transportation used some very questionable and suspicious reasons for wanting to purchase this accessible van. They did, however, fail to mention in the public record that the van's primary purpose includes making stops at Starbucks and shuttling Go Transit bus drivers around town. Go Transit buses go everywhere and anywhere that Go Transit bus drivers would need to go. Go Transit bus drivers should be riding Go Transit buses to their shift changes because it would have meant $60,000 more could have been spent on capital improvements that would make the fixed route system ADA compliant. My biggest concern, however, is with the present fixed route system, is that Go Transit did not follow the Transportation Development Plan's recommendation to implement a single-hub system for the city of Oshkosh, and their continued resistance to change it back to a single-hub system. Instead, they designed a system with six hubs, which has, in effect, doubled the chance of slip, trip, and fall injuries to the elderly and the disabled, and has caused many of them to start using more specialized transportation alternatives, which is a more limiting and a more costly option resulting in less cost-effective use of the taxpayers' dollars. That was Katie Monk, Chief Executive Officer at Lakeland Care District, in a letter to Mark Roloff dated September 23, 2013. Clearly, these six hubs transfer points are not needed in a city the size of Oshkosh, and it is extremely clear that these hubs and transfer points continue to violate the accessibility and transportation rights of the elderly and the disabled, which are guaranteed by the ADA.
I'm going to ask you to finish up here.
Okay.
I'm giving you a little extra time already.
It is hoped that the Common Council will see that they need to take action on this very important transportation issue and instruct city management and the Transportation Department to adopt and implement one of the two alternative systems given in the 2000 Transportation Development Plan. This has gone on much too long and is unacceptable, not only to me, but every other physically-challenged or elderly person in Oshkosh who rides or wants to ride the buses at Go Transit. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
Could the gentleman please provide a copy of that to the clerk?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not too good at public speaking. I'm going to start having to pay the tax.
You did a good job. Anybody else like to come forward at this point? Seeing no one come forward, I will go to the Consent Agenda Items. The Consent Agenda Items are a group of items that the administration feels are noncontroversial in nature, and as such are presented in a way that they'll be voted on with one vote. Unless either a council member or a citizen wants to have a particular item removed from the consent agenda, if that happens, then we'll take that item off the consent agenda for separate consideration. What I'm going to do is this, is I'm going to read through these items, and as I read through these items, if there's one the public would like to speak to, as I read that item, I'd ask that you come forward to the microphone. Once the public has had a chance to speak on all these items, I will bring them back to the council for some discussion and ultimately a vote. So I'm going to start reading through them, and again, if there's an item you'd like to speak to, please come forward as I read that particular item. Approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from August 7, 2014. Approval of cash report for August 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company. Cody Abler for alleged damage to his vehicle from a sanitation truck. Resolution 14-419, approve granting utility easement to Wisconsin Public Service Corporation, 663 West Third Avenue. Resolution 14-420, approve accepting easements for construction of a bus shelter at 1900 Jackson Street.
My name is Rob Patterson. I live at 530 North Main, apartment 103 is my mailing address, and I presently live in apartment 303 while 103 is being fixed up. I'm here to speak about the bus route. The recommendations were from the Plan Commission, I believe, and I got, I had some information about that last week, that the city has started working on the bus, the bus stall, and on Jackson Street. But then I also realized that today, I heard on the radio that you were voting on it tonight. So I thought it was, it's already foregone conclusion, I gather. But my argument is that as of last winter, the city and Pick 'n Save had differences of opinion about who was to keep that walk clear of snow and ice last winter. And I think on one occasion, it was real icy. I got off the bus on Jackson Street, and I couldn't even, well, I was able to stand, but I have a hard time with balance and coordination, and I just kept slipping and falling. And I thought to myself, well, this stuff isn't going to work. And I didn't have enough money for the cab that night, so I just, I got stood up, and the bus driver hadn't moved on, and he said I could just get back on the bus, you know, and I would just go back home. And that worked out just fine, but I asked you to put yourself in my place and in my shoes, and you're disabled, and speaking for the disabled and for the elderly, this bus stop just won't work. I also serve on the Human Services Board as a citizen member, and why I'm mentioning that is because of, I believe, the cost of a bus is around, give or take, $500,000, and not including fringe benefits. Now, why would I say this? Because as long as I've been coming to the council meetings, I've been hearing about the, you're always making a big argument for innovation and bringing more income into the city, and I find this peculiar because you won't invest in more buses. And I just wanted to make you aware of the things that I was doing and things that were going on. And I see that my time is just about up, so in conclusion, I would say, think carefully before you vote tonight on what you're going to do with approving the resolution, and just think about it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick clarification. We're talking about accepting the easement at this point, which is related to location, but we're really not specifically talking about location, but it's obviously related. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Oh, that was just the clarification I wanted to make, and I just wanted to ensure that, Mr. Patterson, your concern is strictly about the location of where the shelters can be built, correct?
Yeah, full location.
Okay, okay, great.
Anybody else? Okay, Resolution 14-421, approve conditional use permit planned development and architectural design for construction of public restrooms, shelter, and associated amenities for Boatworks Riverwalk Park Development. Resolution 14-422, award bid for metal and concrete surface coating for water filtration plant to Omni Glass and Paint Inc. Resolution 14-423, award bid for tunnel deck coating for wastewater treatment plant to Central Restoration LLC. Resolution 14-424, approve purchase of single Turner valve maintenance trailer for water distribution department for EH walks. Resolution 14-425, award bid for towing services contract for police department to Expert Automotive Service LLC. Resolution 14-426, approve initial resolution declaring intent to reassess tax parcel number 15-1898-1000, reconstruction of Jackson Street Murdoch Avenue intersection. Resolution 14-427, approval of special event, and now these are all going to be special events, so I won't say special event each time. Menominee South Neighborhood Association and Mid-Morning Kiwanis to utilize Menominee Park tennis courts for their Oshkosh Tennis Open at Menominee Park, October 4, 2014. Resolution 14-428, UWO Police Department and Special Olympics to utilize city streets for their run with the cops, 5K, October 9, 2014. Resolution 14-429, Oshkosh North Student Council to utilize city streets for their Oshkosh North High School Homecoming Parade, October 10, 2014. Resolution 14-430, Oshkosh Aces MC Inc. to utilize city streets for their Fourth Annual Chili Run for Adopt a Family, October 11, 2014. Resolution 14-431, Oshkosh West Student Government to utilize city streets for their Oshkosh West Homecoming Parade, October 17, 2014. Resolution 14-432, UW Oshkosh to utilize city streets for the UWO Tour de Titan, October 18, 2014. Resolution 14-433, UW Oshkosh to utilize UWO Sports Complex for their UWO Tent City, October 18, 2014. Resolution 14-434, Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce and Network Health to utilize city streets for their Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce Holiday Parade, November 13, 2014. Resolution 14-435, Saturday's Farmer's Market to utilize city streets for their Farmer's Market, June 6, 2015, through October 31, 2015. Resolution 14-436, Vietnam Veterans of America to utilize city streets for their Oshkosh Fourth of July Parade, July 4, 2014. Resolution 14-437, approval of block party request, Cliffview Drive between Murdoch Avenue and Grabner Street, September 27, 2014. Resolution 14-438, approve appointment to Transit Advisory Board. Resolution 14-439, approve combination Class B licenses, special Class B licenses, and operator licenses. Last chance to come forward on any of these. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to bring it back to the council for any discussion. First, any questions you may have, or if there are items that you want removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration, if you'd let me know, I would do so. Mr. Cummings?
Thank you, Mary. Resolution 14-421 is tied also to new resolutions, 14-442 and 14-443, which all has to do with the Boatworks property. I'd like Mr. Davis to come up here and just explain, this is kind of one package, even though we'll be voting differently at different times.
So overview of the project?
Overview of the whole project, yes, even though there are three separate issues, it's all tied together.
Yes, the city has a plan for the whole Boatworks Riverwalk corridor redevelopment. That included a lot of elements. The most important one was a riverwalk, but we also identified other features in the Boatworks area for kind of a mini park that would include a shelter and bathroom, a parking lot in public access, and fortunately, the city's put in enough grant applications and explained the whole project to DNR over the years, that when the DNR had some additional funding that they could put towards projects, they saw not only our riverwalk, but our plans for the rest of that park, and they said if we could come up with specific projects that they could fund, we could apply for additional grant funding. We did that earlier this year, and we were recently awarded funding that would pay for the bathroom shelter, the parking lot, stormwater management, the connection to the neighborhood to the south, and a canoe kayak launch. And the shelter is one of those pieces that is kind of an add-on to the whole project. We were doing the riverwalk, but when DNR had the additional funding, the additional grants, we were able to do more projects, including the bathroom shelter. The other piece that, so we're accepting all those grant funds. The other piece that we're also doing tonight is asking to retain AECOM to work on the additional engineering required for the additional projects at the Boatworks property. So that kind of encapsulates everything.
Thank you, and I might add, I had the chance to go past there about two weeks ago from the water, and what has been done so far really looks incredible. It's just fantastic.
Excellent.
Good work. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, and I guess, I don't know if it should be for staff or for the citizens here, but related to Resolutions 14-435 and 14-436, these are for the Farmer's Market and the Fourth of July Parade, and I know there had been, you can take that. I know there had been some concern initially just about the Fourth of July event, the Fourth of July Farmer's Market falling at the same time as the parade. I see there's representatives here from both organizations, and I didn't know if they were going to speak when the resolutions came up, but I guess, I guess I just want to ensure that there's some mutual agreement from both parties on what's taking place.
I think this is an outstanding example of two groups cooperating very well together. I know that there was a concern about what was ultimately going to happen. Our Special Events Committee met with, invited the groups to come in and threw out some ideas, and they went back and came back with a resolution to this. They're adjusting the route for the parade on the Fourth of July. A few years back in 2010, when construction was going on Main Street, the parade had to move their route because they didn't want to fall into a hole while they were going through a parade. This time, they're working together so that both the Farmer's Market and the parade can coexist, and we're very pleased and proud that they were able to work it out with minimal concern, and just appreciate everybody's cooperation on it.
Okay.
I have a comment on it.
Yep. Mr. Herman?
I totally agree with everything you said, except the route, to me, doesn't make any sense going down Division Street. That's going to put too much traffic into those residential neighborhoods, along with the Farmer's Market traffic. We'll get complaints from the business district, which we did, which we still do now with the Farmer's Market, that people would be parking in those lots for both events, and customers can't get to their businesses. We will get complaints on that.
I think, for the most part, the committee discussed those issues. Because it is the Fourth of July, the number of businesses open aren't going to be as significant. I know- I know some businesses have already expressed a concern, and Matt Harris is working on logistics so that ingress and egress, in and out of the parking lots, will be able to, to be maintained.
I'm more, I'm as much concerned about that as I am for Middle Village Association. Division Street's a very narrow street, and there is no parking, there'll be all residential parking. I would have thought personally, when they hit Washington, they would have stayed on Washington and took it down to Hazel. Would have been much more wider street. It would have been much more room for citizens to watch the parade. I know Irving's a big street where a lot, a lot of citizens do come and watch the parade, but I think putting it on Division, now, just with my law enforcement background, that's a nightmare.
I guess.
But they agree, and that's fine. It's their parade, it's their route. They worked it out, that, that's the biggest thing. Because I, I know, I don't think council wanted to be the deciding factor of the route, but I, I, I just think that they should have looked at a more major street than Division to put it on when they hit Washington. That's just personal opinion.
Well, I think there's good logistical issues that can be discussed, and if any of the folks want to comment on those, perhaps they can. If, if something came up where people thought we might want to tweak the routes, I think we would be open to that. But I think these folks wanted to know they had a route in place, the parade's going, the Farmer's Market's going, and so they can proceed with their plans. Those comments are well taken, and I guess the groups can take, take it into consideration if they, if they want to consider any type of route change. I'm sure we would entertain those requests as well. And there were some creative options that, that weren't, didn't seem like they were going to work out.
You know, just going back to, you know, if, if you drive down Central and Parkway and all those Middle Village streets are very small, very narrow, and you're asking cars that can park on both sides of the street, and we're still going to be able to get fire trucks through there and hamlets, did we check on that?
Police and fire.
Because that's going to be very narrow. Those streets are only what, Mr. Pottick, do you know what those, are those thirty-two?
Thirty, they're thirty foot wide, but there's parking restricted on one side.
On all that, in that whole subdivision?
Right.
In that hole?
Right.
Okay. All right, that's good. I just know that it's a very old part of our neighborhood, and the parking from Jackson to Division is very narrow and small streets. And I just think that there would be better opportunity, because it's almost two different entities. Either you come to the Farmer's, and you may cross over. But I think a lot of people come with kids and family, they're going to be walking blocks to get to Division Street to watch the parade because of the parking. And they'll be parking on the other side of Jackson. I hope that we have CSOs and police officers monitoring the intersections, because you're going to have a lot of traffic up and down Jackson, and a lot of citizens walking across the intersections, Church, Jackson, Jackson, and other intersections where there will be thirty-five mile an hour traffic going down the road. Just a safety concern.
Can I just, we're coming here, because I, go ahead.
I, I saw a gentleman in a blue uniform back there getting up a moment ago. I'd like to have him come up to the front. Looked like he wanted to speak.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think your, your concerns are well placed, although I, I trust in the logistics that Sergeant Harris is going to work out. I haven't seen fully the plan yet, but in the interest of kind of keeping it close to the traditional route, we felt that it would work. Access to the businesses, Fourth of July, some of those will be closed. We do have a plan, you know, onto Elgoma, I'm sorry, from Brown onto Division for, you know, some of the ingress egress to occur. So I'm confident that we will have a good plan in place. We will have staff there to monitor all the concerns that you have. We've thought of those, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, just a couple of comments. I do want to express appreciation part of the council to both groups. There's some compromising going on here. Two, two great organizations have put on great events. Everything happens to happen on the Fourth of July. It'll be, it'll be busy, and everybody's going to have to walk a little, but that'll be true at the fireworks at the same time. But the main thing is, is if people were able to work together and get this settled out in a way, if we can tweak it some, it makes it better for everybody than so much. I'm also pleased that this got settled now, and we aren't here next March discussing what's going to happen unless we tweak it a little between now and then. So again, thanks to both groups. Okay, other comments on, yeah, Mr. Cummings.
One more, one more question. This is Resolution fourteen dash four twenty-six, which is the approved initial resolution declaring intent to reassess tax parcel fifteen and so forth, you know, the reconstruction of Jackson Street and Murdoch Avenue. Can you explain, in layman's terms, what that means and what is CED LLC?
CED LLC is the property owner for, it's the Taco Bell parcel. Back in two thousand ten, there was road reconstruction, that intersection was changed, there were assessments. They, CED challenged their assessments, and as we proceeded through court, ultimately the assessments were invalidated by the court based on a technical ground. In that situation, the statutes allow us, allow a municipality to go back and have a do-over. You can start the process over and reassess. So that's what we're proposing. It's for the same amount that was assessed in the original assessment. The, it doesn't affect any of the other properties. They've either paid already or are on their payment plan and paying them. It's just that one parcel.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments, or anybody want to pull anything for separate consideration?
I, just.
Yeah, Mr. Herman.
Yeah, it's Resolution fourteen dash four twenty, addressing Mr. Patterson's concerns. Mr. Collins isn't here, is he?
No, he's not.
Wasn't, wasn't there some discussion that they, with, where this location of the bus shelter, wasn't there going to be a side, a separate sidewalk put in laterally or something?
I believe, it sounds like Ms. Lawrenson may know the answers to that.
There's some discussion with the Pick 'n Save owners about putting in a sidewalk kind of diagonally.
Right.
To that. That discussion's ongoing. It looks like it might happen, but that hasn't been absolutely finalized yet.
Okay. So they are aware that there could be some issues, and they're working with transit and everything to address some of those concerns?
They've been very cooperative.
Okay. All right, just to, you know, I don't want him to think we weren't thinking about his concerns, because I know it kind of goes uphill a little bit there, so in the winter it could be a problem. It's farther down, too. It's not right at the entrance to the parking lot.
Yeah, that, that would probably be more beneficial to folks who are boarding the bus rather than getting dropped off, because once they get dropped off, they would probably just use the regular sidewalk. But if somebody was waiting for the bus, that diagonal sidewalk that you're referring to would make it easier and quicker to get to the bus shelter, and then they'd be under the shelter until the bus arrived.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings.
And I believe Pick 'n Save has agreed to keep that area clean in the winter.
Yeah, that, that'll be their responsibility, and that's pretty much written into most of the easement agreements, that they're responsible for it. It just makes it more likely that they'll get it done, because they're out there, they're required to do the sidewalks in the first place, so the things leading up to the bus shelters, the property owner typically does those.
Okay, more hands. Why are you tapping me on the shoulder? I will ask for a motion and a second on the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion at this point? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda as presented to the council.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so that takes us down to a new ordinance. This will be the first of two readings. I'll have one reading tonight and one reading at the meeting in, in two weeks. Tonight, anybody would like to comment on this particular ordinance, feel free to come up and speak at the microphone. Otherwise, it'll be brought up at the next meeting, and that's when it'll actually be voted on. Ordinance fourteen dash four four zero, approval of parking regulation changes on Sawyer Street. See no one come forward, then we'll, we will go on to the new resolutions. New resolutions, go through these one at a time for consideration. Resolution fourteen dash four four one, amend two thousand fourteen capital improvement program to move funds from National Guard Armory Area Stormwater Detention Basin Project to Marion Road Storm Sewer Outfall Project. If anybody would like to speak to that, who's here in the council chamber, please come forward. See no one come forward, come back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion at this point? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution fourteen dash four four one.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution fourteen dash four four two, approve accepting grant funds from Department of Natural Resources Boatworks Pedestrian Bridge Riverwalk Project. Would I like to come forward to speak to that? This is a project that was talked about before, on Boatworks property on the river. Okay, bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion at this point on the grant funds? Seeing none?
I do want to make, make one, one comment, and this is, you know, we're talking grant dollars from the DNR. That is nine hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cents we're getting from the DNR. Mr. Davis is shaking his head, yes. Congratulations, that's.
Just a hundred million dollars, though.
Yeah, that's making a lot of this project doable, so thank you.
Yes, keep it up.
Okay. Well, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution fourteen dash four four two.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution fourteen dash four four three, approve engineering service agreement with AECOM for Boatworks restroom improvements. Anybody like to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward to speak to that, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution fourteen dash four four three.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to pending resolutions. Resolution fourteen dash four four four, approve neighborhood association recognition policy. Anybody like to speak to that? Gray coming up. This is something we considered before, and some people have made some comments about it before, and have been a number of changes made in response to those comments.
I'm Helen Hurlash, ten twenty-nine Hazel Street. Before you vote on this proposed neighborhood association policy, I would like to suggest three amendments. The name chosen, number one, the name chosen for this association should reflect the true location of that neighborhood. For example, the waters of Miller's Bay extend from Oaks Trail on the north and to the end of Irving Avenue on the south. Wouldn't you think that the people living in those fifty houses would be considered a neighborhood? We all enjoy the views of Miller's Bay, and we all share the advantages as well as the disadvantages of living across the street from Menominee Park. We also have higher assessments and pay higher taxes as a result. But the fact is, the Miller's Bay Association was formed without inviting those of us who live south of New York Avenue, cutting off our neighborhood in half. But they did include their friends living near Webster Stanley School, who are far from the lake and park and have a different set of problems. They even shut out the George Washington statue from their association, which brings me to the second amendment I propose. A neighborhood association should deal only with issues within, within the borders of their own neighborhood. The Washington statue is not in their neighborhood by their own definition. Not to worry, they spent money, many dollars, to have three sets of landscape designs drawn up and invited us, the outsiders, to choose one along with them. Many people didn't like any of the plans, too much concrete, too little green space, an attractive nuisance which could bring problems. My third amendment would require that all projects proposed by a neighborhood association must be funded by that association. No tax money, no matching funds. They are required to have a fundraiser in every year anyway, so let them spend what they earn on their projects. As you very well know, our city, state, and country are deeply in debt, and we must distinguish between wants and needs. President Washington risked his life, his health, and his property so that we would not be ruled or taxed by a non-elected king reaching across the ocean. I want some assurance that other Oshkosh neighborhoods will not be pushed around by a non-elected neighborhood association in another part of the city. I request that this resolution be tabled until all of this can be sorted out. The best way to honor President Washington is to follow his presets, which have stood the test of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
My, my name's Gary Gray, eight fifteen West Linwood. About a month ago, I came before the council and talked about the proposed neighborhood recognition policy back then, and I was asked to submit my suggestions to, to the city, and I did, and the city did, for some reason, took, took my, most of my suggestions. There are some suggestions I made that are not in the current policy, but there's also some things in the current policy that I don't think are good, but the thing is, is I'm, I'm not spitting the, the new, the new policy. The city staff is kind of spitting it. I think it's just a difference of understanding of what a community association is and the purpose of the community organization. But going on from that, I, I would suggest there could be a small correction on currently proposed policy, and what I'm talking about is the second from the last sentence in the removal of recognition section. And before I get to specifics, I believe that generally, the common council generally flies thirty thousand feet off the ground in oversight for city staff activities and proposals. From time to time, a council member flies down to tree top, top level to look at more detailed activities, and then after looking at the activities and, you know, maybe even making some modifications, trying to make some modifications, they fly back up to thirty thousand feet. The sentence I, I'm talking about is this sentence that says, if the city removes recognition, the neighborhood association, the city council will be informed in writing, which is fine. However, I think that this is basically looking, looking at staff activities at a tree level, at tree level, not at thirty thousand feet, and I think the rest of policy is basically having the council look at this for thirty thousand feet level. The interesting thing about this sentence is that the staff will notify the city council, the common council, in writing of a decision that the common council made, and I'm not sure why the city council, I'm sorry, the common council should be notified of something that they already are well of. And I would suggest that this sentence may be modified a little bit by just two, two things. One is the deletion. The deletion is. The deletion is just remove and city council, and then add to the, to the end of the sentence within five, three business days. So that the revised sentence would say, if the city removes recognition, the neighborhood association will be informed in writing within three business days. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward at this point? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the council and ask for a motion and a second on resolution fourteen dash four four four.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, Mr. Gray, as you said, and you said you don't, you don't know why they took your suggestions, because they were good suggestions that you brought forward last month, so thank you for those. One of the suggestions that Mr. Gray made that, that wasn't included in the, in this revision, and it was a suggestion that I thought was important as well, is that the neighborhood associations are required to report their financial information on a annual basis. And the reasons that, that city staff decided not to include this within the revision were that they were, there were some concerns apparently from, from the neighborhood associations about having that financial information be made public. I, I guess personally, I don't necessarily agree with that. It's not a deal breaker for me to not pass this resolution tonight. I think it's important that we get this on the table, but I do want the public to know that that is not included in this. And, and, you know, at some, and this is going to be open to revision at any point down the road, you know, should, should citizens determine that that's important for, and I see our community development directors coming forward, I think, to maybe give more of an explanation than, than I'm giving. But, but I, you know, it, I, ultimately, I want the citizens to be aware of the fact that that's not going to be a requirement as far as this policy is stated at this point.
Although, to clarify, when there's any city funds, that will always have to be accounted for. It's the private funds that they would not have to account for. So city funds would always be accounted for.
And that would be for a specific project that they would do, that they would be using those city funds for?
Correct, so will always require accounting for that. It's the other activities that they have, that they would prefer to keep in, within their own organization. And since there's no city funds, I didn't see a compelling public interest to include that.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, have a question?
Sure.
It was brought up about neighborhood associations can only make decisions that are in the boundaries of their neighborhood association, right? They can't technically go outside of their boundary. I mean, they can make suggestions maybe, but realistically, the reason there's an association is so that they focus on issues in their identified neighborhoods, right?
That's typically the case, although when you do a, a plan, that's when we nail down what they actually want to, to accomplish. And sometimes it might not be in their neighborhood. Emmeline Cook is an example where there's two neighborhood associations that see an interest, and it's really just in one of the neighborhood associations. Emmeline Cook serves multiple neighborhoods. So I, I can't really say that that's, that's something that we want to hold a hard, fast rule on, because neighborhood associations can have an interest outside their neighborhood that affects their neighborhood directly. Like the school, or potential park service, or any other kind of event that might be occurring in their neighborhood. So I'd be reluctant to prohibit a neighborhood association from doing anything that's within their geographic boundary. There are some examples in the last year that I think there's a compelling interest for the neighborhood to get involved with a project outside their neighborhood.
And one, and one comment with Emmeline Cook, they, the two associations have also worked with the school district.
Yes.
So this has been a very collaborative effort.
Right.
I think as far as the recognition, recognition policy that has been worked on extensively by city staff and the neighborhood associations, many of which had formed three, four years ago. So this is something that just didn't happen overnight. I think if the association members feel comfortable with this draft.
That's my understanding, and just to clarify, one other point, whenever the city puts any money in towards a project, that is always on public property. It's always a public improvement. If it's private property, a private improvement, that's always the neighborhood association's responsibility.
As was done with the triangle on Bone Street.
Correct.
That was city property, but Neighborhoods funded that.
Yes, and we will take donations for city projects on city property, of course, which is what neighborhood associations have also done.
Mr. Herman?
Just one more question, Mr. Davis, you mentioned the funding state. Could you just, for those in attendance and listening, how does the city fund the neighborhood associations, or how do we work with, I shouldn't say fund them? How do we work with them to, to get some of their projects that they're interested in throughout the city and their neighborhood?
It's kind of a birthing process and, and growing and developing. We help them if they want to organize, if there's just a critical mass of residents that want to find out if there's interest in the neighborhood. We'll actually help them do a survey, send out a mailing, an information piece. We'll also attend meetings if they want to talk about creating a neighborhood associations, the pluses and minuses. If they choose to create a neighborhood association, then we'll assign staff to help them with projects. Typically, there'll be a plan for the neighborhood, and we'll help them with putting a plan together, operational plan and a capital improvement plan, if you want to put it that way. And then we'll help them actually implement some of those things, because if there's city projects on city land, it's important that the city has an important role to play on that. So we'll help them through that entire process up to, including the, the council approval and any kind of bidding requirements, to make sure we meet all the city's requirements when it comes to these projects. And then we'll help them with their own projects as time goes by. And we actually work with Neighborhoods to, so all the neighborhood associations kind of know what each other is doing, so they can learn from each other as well. So we run the whole gamut of helping create, grow, and maintain.
But the funding piece of that, where does it come into your budget? We approve it through?
Under planning services at this point.
Right.
It's in the planning department, so there's two planners that, that are just about their, a bulk of their time is spent on neighborhood associations and neighborhood association projects.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other comments? Again, I want to thank all those who are involved. The policy has been developed through the work of a lot of people, primarily out of the neighborhoods and with staff, so we're appreciative of that. May not be perfect, may be subject to further revision at any point in time, but it's important to have a policy out there and some guidelines, so that we have some structure attached to this and some understanding. So thank you and your department and all the people involved.
I appreciate all the input from the neighborhoods and help them staff, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll ask deputy clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution fourteen dash four four four.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Takes us to council discussion, direction of city manager and future agenda items. Go EDC update.
I don't really have anything formal, because the last time I reported, it's pretty much the same thing. We're in the process of recruiting for Go EDC's first CEO. Deadline's in the next couple of weeks, so we'll be reviewing applications after that. And the request for proposal for marketing, services, and website development is also out there, and we'll be reviewing that as well very soon. And the resource development committee, i.e. fundraising, is actively getting ready. So if you have a business in town, chances are, we're going to be knocking on your door collectively with Go EDC. So that's really the update I have at this time. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
I cannot, future agenda items, budget workshops, we got to, we're going to be back here tomorrow night, folks. Five, five to seven tomorrow night, so we're.
I think Ms. Larson provided you with a draft agenda, hopefully, okay, good, because I just have a pre-draft. The one thing that we've done in the past is whenever Schenk is ready to do the annual audit report, we will do it. They will be here tomorrow night. We had to truncate the agenda a little bit, because we, we do want to give them an opportunity. But this is a general overview. The CIP, we are not intending to go through the CIP document that the plan commission received. That was given to them for purposes of determining its consistency with the comprehensive plan. We're going to be tweaking that a little more to make it more of a financial document, and we'll explain that a little more tomorrow night. We are going to go through some basic overview, as it's shown on the agenda. Probably the biggest thing are, that we want to talk about are, towards the bottom, CIP policy ideas, as well as prioritization. That was a big issue for council. What do we go through to, when we analyze projects, and how do we determine how they get in the CIP in the first place? We're going to have some information on that, and happy to provide that for you at that time. And then the, the other issue there are scheduling future workshops. November fifth was identified as a, the third night, and November.
Before we do that, we got the twenty-ninth and thirtieth here on the budget stuff, too.
Right, those were pretty much set, those are departments, those are the traditional ones where the departments make the presentations. We're going to have the department split into two, so twenty-ninth you'll have one group, the thirtieth you'll have another group. And then the fifth is typically the third one where we do get into the CIP. And hopefully, with the meeting tomorrow night, we'll lay the groundwork. We're going to get into a little bit of public works and streets, because that is such a huge part of the CIP. But I think we're going to lay the groundwork tomorrow night, so that as you're looking at the CIP, you'll be able to see the thought process that we went through that, that got into the CIP in the first place.
Mark, you indicated early, in your, your comments, that the, the CIP document that was submitted to council and provided to council last week is, is really a draft. And you and I talked about something, and I, I know you've been contacted by other council members related to it, related to something that was in the CIP budget for the transit department. And pursuant to our conversations, I know that some constituents contacted me about a question related to that. Could you, you know, I mean, the fact that this was just a draft document, it's not set in stone yet, could you just kind of follow up and let the public know what, what the issue was and what happened, and go from there?
Sure, this is the, the cameras. You have to go back to, this is a draft document. This originally was begun back in the spring, when departments were putting this together. And in the case of the cameras for the transit center, we were still addressing an issue with fiber optics to, to serve the transit center. And that, the, this amount was actually in the 2014 operating budget. There was uncertainty over whether or not we were going to be able to pull it off this year. Fortunately, since the time that it was submitted as, again, basically, we were rebudgeting it for 2015. It was moved into the capital improvement plan rather than the operating budget. That was a decision made by Mr. Collins, no, no big deal there, but it was duplicated. And Councilor Pansky asked about it, and we explained how the, the fiber optics back in May were uncertain, now they're more certain. Looks like we're going to get the fiber optics in this year, so we're going to do that. That's one of those things that you'll see pulled from the plan. And as we talk about tomorrow night, we're actually a little short of eleven-four. This will make us a little shorter of eleven-four. Gives you an idea that it is, it is a moving, it's a fluid document, and it's going to continue to be a fluid document until council ultimately approves.
So it was actually monies that were approved last year, we didn't, in, in the 2014 budget, we didn't expend them in 2014, so we're carrying it over to 2015.
But now it looks as though we're going to be able to pull it off this year, and I think Mr. Collins, if we, as long as the fiber optics are in place, that was what really was holding us back. So it's still on the bubble, it could end up in 2015, it could be in 2014. Right now, I would, my belief is that we're going to get it done in 2014, so we'll yank it from 2015.
And in our conversations, you indicated something about grant funding, possibly?
Well, these are all funded by Transit Aid. And one of the reasons we moved it in, I think the conscious effort to move it into CIP is, there is a slight chance that we could get what's called capital funding versus operational funding for something like this. Capital funding's funded at eighty percent, or it has been, but the, the feds have been yanking that down. Do I, my guess is that we probably will not get the eighty percent, so that's kind of why we're leaning towards, if we can get it done this year, and we're not going to get eighty percent, we'll, we'll just do it this year. Federal operating funds are down to fifty-five percent. A few years ago, they were at sixty-two percent, then sixty, now fifty, then fifty-seven, now fifty-five, couldn't even get as low as fifty-four. So we'd prefer to get eighty percent funded, but if we can't, then we'll go with the fifty-five.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir? Okay, report on the employee clinic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been having meetings with, across departments and individual, departments and divisions for the last month or so, reported to council that we were going to be doing that. And for the most part, I'd say the response has been positive. Change is always something that employees and just anybody in an organization get a little concerned about. But we've really made these types of changes before, when we've switched over from a preferred provider with one provider, like when we went to Affinity to Aurora. That was a change in providers, so that is a natural concern that employees have. But the, the main concerns that the employees seem to have were fearful that the clinic might be mandatory in the future. Well, when we have a preferred provider plan, if you go, if you go to the preferred provider, you get a discount versus if you don't go to the preferred provider. So it really isn't anything different, it's just another overlay to the, the health, the health plan that we have. Some, we're concerned about high penalties for not using the system, and we've talked with Intera, which is the group that the three of us, the city, the county, and the school district, have identified as being the, the provider if we were to do this. And they've indicated that there's generally a gap. If you have about a twenty-five dollar, twenty to thirty dollar difference between the cost to go to the clinic and the cost of not going to the clinic, people will get directed. They, they will naturally go to the clinic and at least give it a try. And with Intera's experience, once people give it a try, they realize that there is, it is a good, it's a, it's a well-run clinic, very professional, and you get a lot more attention, which is one of the things that our employee group, we, we sent a full employee group to go over to Sheboygan, take a look at their operation, and they were very pleased with what they saw. And they reported that back to our employees as well. So we're hoping to get steerage with that differential, that's what Intera believes you will get. Intera doesn't make any money unless they get people going to the clinic. And so that's what, that's their motivation to get this done. With everything I've heard from the employees and seeing what they've said, the majority are willing to give it a try. And we believe that with twenty, we've estimated that with, if twenty-eight percent of the services that this clinic could offer are done in the clinic versus elsewhere, other, other options, we'll save one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. And that's a significant amount of money, when you think about how much is in our health insurance plan of over ten million, that's still a pretty significant amount of money. That could help slow the increase in health insurances, has been continuing to go up and up. So I believe we're ready to move forward with this. My plan would be to bring this to council for their consideration on the last meeting in October, not the next meeting. What I would propose to do is to provide you with updated frequently asked questions that the employees ask throughout this process, so you can see what the questions were and what the, and what the answers to those questions are. And certainly, if there's any questions that come to pass that you want answered, we want to make sure you have an opportunity to get those questions answered as well. A representative of Intera has indicated they'd be willing to come and make a brief presentation, not a workshop, just ten-minute presentation at the next council meeting. If that's something council would like, we'll schedule that with Intera, so that you can meet them face to face, talk to them about what their approach is to providing an employee-only clinic. The school district and the county are willing to wait for us to get on board, if this is the schedule we follow. If we do this, we would be looking sometime in January, because we need to give Intera a ninety-day notice to proceed, so they can get employees hired, rent the proposed location of the clinic, which right now appears to be over on Emmer's Lane, near that Walgreens at Emmer's and Highway twenty-one. That looks to be a central location for school district, county, and city employees, so that's the area they're looking at. But Intera can provide you with, with greater detail, if you'd like them to make a brief presentation at the next meeting.
Reasonable?
I would, I would ask that, yeah.
Yes.
I think we're starting to.
I know, I'm, I'm kind of putting you on the spot a little bit. If there's any questions in particular you would like answered, please forward them to me, we'll, we'll. I think the employees asked a lot of questions, so our goal is to get to those FAQs very soon, so you can kind of see what the employees said. We're asking the employee focus group to refine those questions and get the answers, so that they feel comfortable with them as well. So we want that group to take a look at it first, before we forward it to council.
The sooner we can get those out, the better, we do have three weeks this time, so.
Yeah, my goal, end of next week is when I'm planning to get the, the final version of the questions to you, so we get the employees a little bit of time to put it together themselves.
Okay, are there questions, comments? Update on riverfront visioning process, Mr. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor Tower. Be very brief, Darren, I've had a lot of people ask me who participated in the visioning process later this latter, in August, what are the next steps, timelines?
Right now, we're at East Central, the, the primary personnel from East Central that was working on the planner, they left and took another job, so it's kind of set them back with getting the report to us. getting the report to us. In our discussions with East Central, they said that they're hoping to get us a report sometime in October, so we can have some type of presentation in November.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Collins? Okay, this comes back to citizen statements to the council.
Mayor, can we go back to, to number B? We never got the sex offender and the budget workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Yeah, I apologize for skipping over that as well. Even between the time we wrote the agenda and tonight, a few things have changed. Originally, I had reported to council that there was a conflict on October 7th, because we were scheduled to have, the Legal Women Voters was going to have the congressional debate right here in the council chambers, which would have conflicted with this, with this workshop. As it turns out, the Legal Women Voters is not going to be sponsoring that debate. A group at UW Oshkosh is going to be doing it. That group does not, the university doesn't have the capabilities for a live telecast of that debate now, because they're at the university and not here. So, we can actually go back to October 7th, if you so choose. If you want to go to the congressional debate, you're gonna have a conflict, but we will have the room, and we will have the broadcasting capabilities, is that correct? So, Andy tells me over there, he shook his head, yes. So, we can go the 7th if you'd like to, for that one.
Do it.
We good on the 7th?
Uh-huh. I can't answer at this time.
Okay. I wish we could have put it in there, but we just, when we printed this, we still didn't know that, but now, now that we know what we know, so we're looking at October 7th, if you could let me know, that would be great. If not, we'll just schedule for another time, we can bring it back at the next meeting. But it looks like October 7th, oh wait a minute, this is the last meeting, the last meeting for October 7th.
This is the last meeting for October 7th, that's reasonable.
What time would we start?
We can, it's a staff only?
I think we had said 6 o'clock, we had 6 o'clock.
Because the Plan Commission beginning at 4 that day.
Correct, so yeah, you're right, it is 6:00 PM. I don't know if that changes it, or is it an issue that you might be out of town?
And I don't recall either, I've had a couple things go on in my schedule. I know I have three open nights in October at this point, so...
Well, let me ask it this way, Mr. Mayor, because if there's some folks who still need to check their calendars, you want, you want full attendance, or what's your limit of how many absences?
I think we probably need full attendance on this, I'll see what others have, we have more than one going, but we don't, we're not gonna go with three or four like we got in...
I can, I can let you know tomorrow, if I'm available.
So, effectively, you want to give each council member the ability to veto the meeting, if I hear anything, I'll let you know.
If it extends too far out, we're gonna have to come back and probably sacrifice more, we have to.
I'd go back outside of the budget.
We're gonna be ready for the 7th, so we can go the 7th, if somebody lets me know they can't make it, I'll just put it on the next agenda to schedule it for future time.
I'm kind of in the same boat as Counselor Fitzgerald, I mean, I barely have any open nights the month of October, and we, I had it for October, moved it to November, so now I gotta go back and check October again, so...
But if we have a conflict, why don't we put it right back on the 5th in November, since we already had it?
We could go back to...
Well, November 5th, that was what we were looking at for the budget workshop. The conflict for November 5th is the Long Range Finance Committee typically meets in 404, so a couple things, well, two council members are on that committee. We could ask Long Range Finance to hold that off. You're gonna hear some discussions about topics for Long Range Finance when we talk tomorrow night. If they'd be willing to postpone their meeting or move it to a different date, we could still do the 5th. So, we weren't thinking of the sexual offenders workshop for the 5th, we were actually thinking for the third budget workshop for the CIP. And we are under the gun there, if we can't do it on the 5th, we've got to pick a date pretty soon. And I would suggest the, well, even the 4th is gonna be tough, because that's election night, and that's why we moved it the last, that's why we moved it to the 5th the last time.
Not in October, not this late in the game. It, you know, my apologies, had it, that been in here, I could have checked before I came, but...
As the chair of the Long Range Finance Committee, I will, I will move our meeting around for November accordingly.
So, we can do the CIP on the 5th?
I see Ms. Larson nodding her head, smiling.
In appreciation, probably, yes.
Okay, so, CIP, still on the 5th, sex offender workshop, suggestions on that?
I think, I can let Mr. Roloff know my schedule by tomorrow, I just know that I only have three nights open.
I'll put it in the newsletter what the consensus is, but we want to make sure we have all seven council members here.
Try to have all seven, no less than six. It'd be nice to have all seven, but if we can't get seven people together for the next two months, then we're gonna be in a pickle, because November's gonna be budget stuff again.
That's why I think we were kind of hoping to knock that out before we went into budget season, so to be honest, that comes first, so we may have to wait on the sex offender workshop, because we've got the budget issues first.
So, let's, let's try for the 7th, then, if you two can get back. Absolutely, by the end of the week, so maybe by the end of the week that we...
We'll know for sure by the end of the week, then.
End of the week, so, the sooner you can do that and let him know whether or not that'll work, then...
Yep, I will, I will do my best.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Mayor, before you go on to the next council, or citizen statements, could we just get a, either in our, in a newsletter, Mr. Roloff, or if you wanted, put it on as an agenda item? We had talked about, and I know Darren's working on it a little bit, but that central city visioning, not, not the riverfront, but we had also talked about, you know, reevaluating the central city, parking was an issue, and future businesses for the central city, what do we want that central city to continue to look like? Because the visioning of that central city is really done. And we had talked about, and you had said, you know, we had talked about going into a visioning of the central city in the long range. So, if we could just have a little update, if staffs worked on it, not worked on it, if you've been talking with East Central to come in on that, or who you just, there was some discussion bringing back the original partners, I think the foundation's part of that, the chamber's part of that, the business improvement district's part of all that, so just an update.
I'll put it on next agenda for an update.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the city manager? Okay, then we'll come back to citizen statements to council, again, an opportunity to talk about something positive going on in the city, or a concern you may have, you'd like to come up, the microphone's open, limits comments to five minutes, give us your name and address, be attracted to the council, no election airing, and don't talk about anything else, it's already been talked about on the agenda. I see no one coming forward. City manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Memo, it's in the agenda on the relocation of the yard waste drop-off site, that's effective next Monday, September 29th. It's just around the corner from Idaho Street, where you currently drop it off, it'll be on West 3rd. It's moving it as part of the Public Works Field Operations Facility, that'll, so we're moving it and letting people know, so if anybody is dropping off yard waste, just keep going around the 3rd, don't worry, it's not closed or anything like that. Same hours we're gonna maintain, as we usually do for the fall. And then, the last item I have in there, I know there have been questions recently about change orders, and this technically isn't required for me to report, but I thought it was important to point out that we do get negative change orders every once in a while. It's one of those things where we only send you the bad news, we don't necessarily tell you the good news. But this is just one example of a change order that we did recently with advanced construction for, for our paving project from last year. Usually, it's less scope of work that's needed, but there are these types of, types of projects that we do spend less, and even though we're not required, we wanted to show you that these do happen periodically, and Ms. Pansky's smiling, so I know she's been asking, being new on the council and everything, but these are the types of things that you'll see. Usually, it has to do with quantities that are adjusted after the fact. That's all I have.
Anything else? Look for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Put adjourn.
See you tomorrow night.